Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Longdale City Council meeting, Monday, November sixteenth. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give the roll call.
Mayor Pullen, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne? Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Here.
All members present, except for Councilmember Osborne, who will be marked absent.
Thank you, sir. Next item on our agenda is our ceremonial portion, which is our flag salute. I'm gonna ask Councilman Pat Kearney to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. Well, tonight we're, thank you. Tonight, we're joined by a special guest tonight, uh, which is gonna be our new supervisor for, for the, the city of Longdale. He currently holds the position of Senator, State Senator Holly J. Mitchell. I'm pretty sure you all are aware of a lot of her good work that she has done over the years and her, during her term in the California State Legislature as a Senator, um, for the area. And she's gonna be having a new role as the Board of Supervisors member coming up in the, what is that, like, in the next couple of weeks or so. Uh, so Holly Mitchell is one of the most effective representatives for Los Angeles. Um, she has worked to pass nearly seventy bills in the legislature to protect and advance California values. And that says a lot, being a, um, a family staffer. I know the hard work that, um, Ms. Mitchell has put in for her constituents, um, in, in her district as a, as a Senator. And she's gonna bring that same type of representation for the city of Longdale on the Board of Supervisors. And we are so looking forward to building a long-lasting, um, relationship, um, with the, um, the supervisor-elect. I should let you know that, um, she, um, was the Chair of the Senate Budget, um, and Fiscal Review Committee. So budget issues are very important, uh, to the Senator. As for she has overseen the passage in the adoption of at least two state budgets. And folks, we know that's not easy to get all the members of the legislature together to, um, to come up with a budget that's on time and a responsible budget. And Ms. Holly Mitchell, Senator, has done a wonderful job, um, as the budget, um, Chair. Um, and also, you should know that she has fought hard to ensure that that funding, uh, was directed to those who needed the most. And that's what she's always been about her career from when she was CEO of Crystal Fair. Um, she's fighting to make sure this budget includes funding for elementary school, college students, healthcare system, childcare services. And those programs have been neglected for a long time that assist our infants and our elderly and our working families. So with no longer further ado, I'm gonna bring up to the mic or welcome up to the mic the incoming supervisor, the supervisor-elect, Holly Mitchell.
Mayor Pullen Miles, thank you so much for that really generous introduction. I appreciate you. Uh, I have to say, um, uh, I will now end my ten-year career in the legislature with ninety bills that will have been signed into law. So I'm very proud of that and will continue to work hard on behalf of the residents, um, of our shared districts. So I just wanted to say hello this evening to yourself, Mayor Protem Suarez, and councilmembers Reed and Kearney. And just say, I wanted to just drop in very, very briefly, um, just to touch bases. I thought it was important even before I, uh, take the oath of office, uh, first week in December, just to touch bases with our city leaders. Uh, I understand what you're going through. Uh, COVID has disproportionately impacted every square mile of the Second Supervisory District. And so I just wanted to reach out to you all early to say I fully intend to be your partner. Um, I want you to know that I will stand with you and do all I can to leverage county resources and for that matter, federal and state dollars to come to our community to help us navigate our way through and out of, in a healthy, stronger way, this public health and economic pandemic. Uh, Mayor Pullen Miles, I want you to know that my commitment is to, within the first hundred days of taking office, convene a session with, uh, the mayors of the nine cities that are represented in the Second Supervisory District. Let me apologize, I'm at the airport, so you hear the background noise. Um, because I wanna create an opportunity to have, again, a direct working relationship with the city. Um, we'll ask that you decide if you wanna bring one council member or whoever. We don't wanna get into Brown Act issue. But really, I want to sit down, and it will really be a listening session, so you all can tell me, um, you know, what you're looking for in terms of support from counties, so we can all collaborate and figure out how we can pull down these sources that we're all gonna need. So thank you for the opportunity. I won't take up any more of your time, but I wanted to introduce myself to councilmembers who I've not yet met and let you know directly from me, I intend to be your partner and work hard to serve you. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Uh, I'm Senator and I'm Supervisor. We really appreciate you taking a moment to introduce yourself to us. And we look forward to the long-lasting relationship and, and starting things off. And we know that you're gonna represent us proudly, as you have, um, with your senatorial district. And we really appreciate that you've reached out to us to introduce yourself, um, to us tonight. With that, I'm gonna ask any of my councilmembers if they would like to, um, add anything before we let you go. We know you're in the airport and we know how your schedule is. Is there anything anyone would like to add, um, to Supervisor-elect Holly Mitchell?
This is Councilman Reed. I just wanna say congratulations, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you and have a safe trip.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
This is Councilman Pat Kearney. Go ahead.
Okay, really quick. I just wanted to say, um, welcome, congratulations. We look forward to working with you. We're a pretty small city, so we do rely on county services a lot for a lot of our operations. So just wanna say thank you. We welcome you to Longdale. Um, hopefully, when this pandemic's over, we can see you more in person. Um, and, um, don't be late. Catch your flight.
Thank you very much, Madam Protem. Yeah, that's precisely why I wanted to reach out to you all. I, I know your relationship with the county, so I wanted you to hear it from me early and directly that we'll be partners and we'll get through all of this together. Thank you very, very much.
Uh, Mayor, Councilman Kearney? Holly, welcome to Longdale. And will you order me a Jack and Coke when you get on the plane, please? Welcome to Longdale.
All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. I look forward to seeing you all soon.
Okay. Thank you once again, uh, again, Madam Supervisor-elect Holly Mitchell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, um, am, uh, looking forward to taking the oath on December sixth. Because of our current circumstance, it will be virtual, but I'll make sure, uh, that you and the councilmembers know in case you'd like to, to tune in.
Very good.
It'll be, uh, it'll be on the, the, uh, they're gonna livestream it on the county website. Thank you so much. You all stay safe. And I look forward to working with everyone.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Bye-bye.
Okay, bye-bye. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Public Safety Report. Let's hear from Captain Allen.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of City Council. I'm here tonight to present the Public Safety Report from November second through November fifteenth. Um, as we go through the fall season into winter, I want to remind our citizens to continue to be diligent in their efforts to protect themselves and their fellow citizens in regards to COVID-19. In regards to crime, the city overall, cities' overall crime rate continues to trend downward. We continue to see a decrease in burglaries, robberies, larcenies, as well as grand theft autos, which to continue, continue to trend down from previous summer highs. As we go through the month of November into December, people will begin to, will be, will begin getting more and more packages in the mail. So we often have porch, porch pirates are co, are common at all times of the year and more so since the beginning of the COVID coronavirus pandemic. After, after surveying over a thousand Americans,的数据评论 found that one in five consumers have been victims of porch piracy amid the virus. We can infer that since the start of the pandemic, more people have been ordering their products online. With more online purchases, purchases, thieves know their opportunities are greater. Members of Generation D, Millennials, and Generation, Generation X have taken the hardest hit as far as frequency, but older adults and seniors have suffered the biggest losses. That's why it's imperative for homeowners and renters alike to take some additional measures and protect their goods, especially during this time of the year. You can start taking action today with the following tips and tools. Um, some of the best tools in fact to protect your packaging. Uh, the devices I'm about to talk about and tools, um, will keep your delivery safe. They may, they may even help you catch a culprit in the event of a grab and run. Outdoor security cameras. For maximum theft deterrence, make sure your outdoor security cameras are highly visible and clearly pointed at the package drop-off area. Video doorbells. Video doorbells are lower-profile than security cameras, so they aren't as effective as a theft deterrent. However, they have the perks that could still make them a good choice for your home, such as motion activation, easy installation, multifunctional features, and a unique vantage point that's more likely to catch a thief's identity than an overhead camera. Package lock boxes. These can be installed near or in conjunction with your mailbox. While even a non-locking parcel box prevents theft by concealing your deliveries from the street, choose a lockable container for maximum cons, for maximum security. Um, some lockbook styles, um, have a slot for easy drop-offs but require a key for retrieval. With boxes that remain locked, USPS will work with you to ensure your delivery person has access. You must also communicate delivery instructions to FedEx and UPS drivers. Um, the use of the Amazon locker. If you purchase from Amazon, you can use an Amazon locker at one of their many locations. It's easy. All you need to do is select a locker at the checkout for shipping. There's no fee. And when your package is ready, you'll get a passcode that you can use to retrieve it. Also, you can use home security window and yard signs. Signs advertising your home security system could be enough to scare off a thief. If you're still saving for, saving up for a system, consider posting, oh, but fake signs, or, um, excuse me. It's also possible to purchase, use real signs, security signs, online. It's no substitute for an actual security system, but many porch pirates aren't highly refined thieves. They're simply looking for a quick way to make money and, and get an adrenaline rush. If you decide to protect your security system or camera, you'll want to make sure that you have access to more. Remember, many thieves are opportunists. They're on the hunt for easy targets. Therefore, one of the most effective ways to prevent package theft is not to allow packages to sit outside for too long. These following measures can help. Have your packages delivered elsewhere, such as your place of employment, Amazon delivery site, a P.O. box, a FedEx or UPS, UPS location. It's well worth a minor inconvenience to ensure your packages are safe. You can request that deliveries require a signature. With carriers like FedEx or UPS, you can often set this preference using your customer account, even if the package is already on its way. In other cases, such as UPS deliveries, you'll need to arrange for a signature ahead of time. You should also subscribe for, to delivery alerts. All the major delivery services offer some kind of notification service for package updates. Opt in to receive the most up-to-date information available. Um, you should also keep the area around front porch clear and thieves want to be able to get to and from your doorstep undetected. When they're likely to be seen, they're more likely to choose another target. And last, um, request nondescript packaging. When possible, ask centers not to announce where the package is coming from, especially if it's from a high-end store. Sometimes this is possible through requesting a gift shipping option. Check the box label gift to ensure your package comes in plain sight. I wanted our community to know, uh, our issues and concerns, because obviously, um, year-round, but specifically in November and going December, uh, when people start getting more packages and, uh, get more packages at their homes, um, we often see a, a huge rise in package theft. So it's very important for people to, to be able to protect themselves and receive their packages and keep them from getting stolen. So I wanted everybody to be aware of these tips. So these are my tips for the month, and I hope they help you get your packages safely. Uh, this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. Uh, are there any, um, questions after Captain's, um, um, report?
Um, no questions but a, a statement and a request, Captain. We're seeing many more, uh, folks running through various intersections doing donuts. And I've seen cars come through, uh, patrol cars come through, and then fifteen minutes later, these guys are coming through. So I don't know if they're watching for the different patrol schedules, so we might need to shake things up and see what we can do to catch some of these guys.
All right. I'll take a note of that. Thank you. Did you have any specific intersections in mind or just kinda in general?
Um, Condon and Marine, One Fifty Second Condon, all, basically, pretty much most of the intersections up and down Condon through this immediate area, and we have had some on the, uh, southwest side of town also.
Okay, sir. I'll, I'll let everybody know.
Okay, I mean, any other questions or comments? Okay, Captain Allen, I wanna thank you for your safety report and those, um, safety tips as we move into the holiday season.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Let's hear from our Assistant City Clerk under Oral Communications.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. Uh, no public comments have been received.
Okay, thank you, sir. With that being the case, we will skip comments from the council. Without objection, let's move to item G, which is the consent calendar. There's five items under the consent calendar. What, what is the pleasure of this body concerning?
Well, if there's no additions or subtractions, I make a motion to accept the ca, consent calendar as written.
This is Councilman Reed. I'll second it.
The move by Kearney that we, uh, that we adopt the consent calendar is taken by Kearney, I mean, taken by Reed, it's Kearney and Kearney. Is there any, um, any questions on debate on the, the motion? Here are none. Let me see. If there's anything the city attorney needs to read, no. Here are none. I'm gonna ask the, um, Assistant City Clerk to give the, conduct the roll call. The vote, please.
For the consent calendar, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne? Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item, um, item, um, seven, um, a budget update, the quarterly ending, I'm sorry, the quarter ending September thirtieth. Let's just pass the court.
Yes, this is Marla Pendleton, Finance Director. Good evening, Mayor Pullen Miles and council. Um, what you have before you today is the quarterly budget update for the quarter ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, and I wanted to start out just to make sure that, um, we kinda see things in context, what our economy is currently like. Um, starting the year out in twenty twenty, we basically were at an all-time high here at, here at the, um, city. We had a lot of growth in sales tax. We had Measure L, and we saw things getting higher than it usually, you know, had been in the past. When the pandemic hit, quite a few things, uh, took its toll. And we still don't know where we're gonna end up at this point. Um, a lot of our sales shifted from our businesses here in Longdale because of internet sales, as we mentioned earlier as, in our, um, police report. Currently, fifty-two percent of our sales taxes coming from out-of-state internet sales. So that shows that it has shifted from our businesses that are not open at this time. We're also seeing, um, some shift from our business licenses. We're getting comments from some of our residential rentals because individuals are being hit by COVID-19 because of work or for other items. And they are actually getting a reprieve on paying rent at this point, so that they're not on the streets. And the impact on that is property owners are not getting, you know, those who are renting it are not getting that rent coming in that could be paying for the mortgage. So what I want to take into consideration with this report is the same as during the Great Recession, where it took a couple, it took a year and a half, two years before we started seeing the impact on our property tax values, on our sales tax, that this is the longest time that we've had a closure. This is unprecedented time. So this is a time to not look at, we've got money or let's spend, but it's a time to conserve because we do not know the full impact of what this pandemic is gonna do on our economy, on our citizens, and on our city. And that's what I want to basically leave us with. As far as revenue, the main thing that's, um, coming in, our general fund revenue, is what is at the discretion of council, and that's for general use. We don't have a lot of information in for the majority of our revenue because we have this accrual period where the first sixty days, revenue that relates to maybe expenditures or activities that happened at the end of the fiscal year, it actually gets posted back to our old fiscal year. So in some instances, as of September thirtieth, we may have only had one month of, of, um, income in some of our revenue sources. Some of it, like property taxes, the majority of that comes in twice a year, so we're not seeing the impact of that yet either. But for those revenues that we do see the impact of, some of it also is being shifted because of legislation changes, such as, um, again, our sales tax. For the quarter ending March thirtieth, sales tax returns did not have to be filed. There was a delay, um, of a quarter before they had to be filed. And then once those got filed, there was installment payments to help businesses pay those taxes over a twelve-month period, up to fifty thousand dollars. So because of that, there was a shift of sales tax from last fiscal year to this fiscal year that's trickling in, in addition to whatever else is coming from our internet sales. So it's hard to have a full understanding of what the total impact's gonna be at this point in time. Um, again, our expenses are comparable. Um, we looked at some of our non-general fund revenue, where we've gotten, where we received three months of it. Um, the main part of it that I put in the report is ba, basically our grant money, the money that's coming in from Metro for street projects. We came up with a hypothetical amount because we did not have a good estimate and didn't know what was, what was coming in. We do have three months of that at this point that have actually been received, and we were able to come up with an estimate for this year. It looks like our estimate is a little bit less than what we budgeted at this point in time, but it's close. It's within two percent of the budget. So I think at this point, it looks like the budgeted expenditures for those programs will still be received. But we'll look at it again, uh, mid-year and see where we're at and see if we need to make any adjustments. And I'll keep my eye open, um, overall on the budget because, like I said, a lot of uncertainty at this point. There are, there are some things at this point in time, though, that we are aware that we need to adjust our budget. And for those things, we have proposed budget adjustments. One of the items is, um, conduit occupancy fee. This is a, uh, contract that we have where we're supposed to get annual expenditure, annual revenue coming in. We did not receive it for two years, so this was not specifically put into the budget. So with this year and the two years back pay that we have received already, we have thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and six dollars that we're anticipating coming in, and I wanted to put that into the budget. So there is a budget adjustment recommended for that. We also sold a vacant strip of land, and we netted, uh, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. And that also, I wanna put that into the budget so we can see where we're at and actually make sure that you're aware of what's coming in. Measure A. Measure A has annual allocations that we can use. And we're putting it in the budget basically to track how much we have to spend and to make sure that we do not, um, we don't go past the five-year period to expend it and lose some of these funding opportunities. So this year, we just recently found out what our allocation is for our third year. So that I wanna put into the budget. The total is two hundred and one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, seventy-two cents. So I wanna put the revenue and the expenses so that as projects are identified, and this is basically for parks and wrecks, so that that money is already in the budget and we know which year we're spending and what pots of money, and we can track that. Our Public Works Director, that position was budgeted under salary and benefits, but as you know, we've had an interim director while we are recruiting for a full-time director. The cost of our last, um, Public Works Director, we need to move money from salary and benefits and move that over into the projects that are being worked, and that's basically the Inglewood Avenue-wide, um, Phase One this year is what we're focusing on. So I wanna move fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and four dollars into that project for those contract costs from salary and benefits. For our CDBG grant, um, our street resurfacing budget was put into an old department number. And to track our annual awards, we usually set up a new department number and track all the expenses against the monthly claims that we do. So I need to move it from an old department number into a new one. There's no budgetary changes in the dollar amounts. It's just basically for accounting. Uh, it's more of a cleanup issue, but I wanna go ahead and propose that as well. The last item that I have, um, as a recommended budget adjustment is for our CARES Act funding. Total amount committed is four hundred and five thousand dollars, of which one hundred and forty-six thousand, eight dollars of expenses were incurred last year and charged against the program. The program was actually approved, so the funding will be for this fiscal year. The remainder, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars was not put into this year's budget because it was known to us after the budget. So I wanna actually put those appropriations in the budget, and that includes our small business grant. And these are based on the amounts that were already discussed with council to expend and was approved, but the budget adjustment wasn't put into place. So I wanna get that budget adjustment in there so we can actually have the authority to expend that amount. So that concludes my budget report. Um, what I'm requesting is that you approve, or at least consider, the proposed budget adjustments. And I am open for any, uh, questions that you may have regarding the budget at this time.
Okay, thank you for that, um, that budget, um, report. Are there any, um, questions of the, of the report? Okay, here are none. Um, I do wanna appreciate you, uh, for, for, I'm issuing this, uh, budget update for the, the first quarter, um, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty-one. It's, um, very easy to follow. I did have one question. I think I was reading it and it kinda explained what it, so. My question is gonna be what's an example of the conduit, um, conduit, um, occupancy fee? Like, exactly what is that? I know it says for the fiber and, uh, conduit system.
And it's, it-
Is that for like the underground, um, um, system?
Exactly. It's basically, it's basically using our fiber optic lines by a company, and we're charging them a per-square-foot fee to use our conduits. So we do have an annual agreement based on square foot that they're charging and paying to us.
And the conduit, okay.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is John, Director of Community Development. That's the agreement that you approved about a year, in two thousand eighteen, between the city of Longdale and Castle, Crown Castle.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I remember. Okay. Um, are there any questions of the report? If, if not, I'll, um, entertain a motion that we receive the, the report and the recommendation.
Uh, Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I'll make a motion.
Okay, great. The motions are made by Ms. Pat Kearney and-
This is Dan. I'll second it.
Okay, let's, let's, um, Mr. Reed, um, Captain Reed, I'll second it. So the motion is to accept the, the staff recommendation to receive and file the quarterly budget report. Um, and the recommendation for the budget adjustment. and the recommendation for the budget adjustment that, that is contained within the report. Are there any discussions or debate on the motion? Then I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
Thank you for item seven. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne, Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh.
All right, there you go. Thank you, ma'am, for that report. Let's see, the next item is the authorization concerned to protest the proposed rate increase concerning Golden State Water Company. Let's have the staff report.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, this is Tiffany Israel, the City Attorney. I will be presenting this item. In July of this year, Golden State Water Company filed an application with the California Public Utility Commission to seek a rate increase for three years, starting in twenty-twenty-two. In twenty-twenty-two, they sought a sixteen-point-seven percent increase, a four-point-three-four percent increase the following year, and four-point-five-two percent the following year, such that the cumulative total increase over three years is more than twenty-five percent. Two years ago, Longdale was successful in challenging Golden State's proposed rate increases. At that time, Golden State was seeking a nineteen-point-three percent increase in base water rates over a three-year, which, period which began January first, twenty-nineteen. That protest by Longdale and Lakewood was successful and resulted in a general rate increase of only nine-point-five percent over the applicable three-year period. Staff believes that the current proposed rate increases for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four are excessive and beyond what Golden State needs to continue safely operating. As the city's last opposition of Golden State's application for increases resulted in a decrease in the amount of the increase by more than half, staff recommends that the city council again initiate a protest. The first step, first step, excuse me, in that protest would be to send a letter to the Public Utilities Commission explaining the grounds for the protest. The protest is overall a very informal process and relatively brief, compared to traditional litigation filed in the court, and as a result, it's a lot less expensive for the city. Like, we initiated this proceeding after hearing from Lakewood, so if the council authorized the staff to move forward with this protest, we would again coordinate with Lakewood as we did the last time. At this time, staff would like the council to discuss this request and to let staff know if you would like to submit a protest to this proposed rate increase. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. I have a quick question. So you mentioned the City of Lakewood that we partnered with, um, in twenty-seventeen, and we're going to do so again. This time, should we elect to, I was wondering if it's just the City of Longdale and, um, and Lakewood? Obviously, the other cities within Golden State Water Company's, um, district service area, I should say. I'm wondering why it's just Longdale and Lakewood?
In Region Two, which I'm not sure what all cities are in Region Two, but we could find out if you're interested. My understanding is that we were the only ones who objected last time. I believe people in other regions of Golden State objected and negotiated different rates.
Okay, so we may have been only two that objected in Region Two.
In Region Two, correct.
Okay, just interesting, that's why I guess the two of us. Maybe the other two, the other cities are just not paying attention, as we are in Longdale and Lakewood.
That could be-
With that, are there any, um, any questions anyone would like to speak on this item?
Um, no questions, but my goodness, they went much higher than the last time around, and I mean, this is just exorbitant. I'd actually like to see us push further to have them push this out past the pandemic, because we honestly don't know if that's going to be done in six months, or twelve months, or what, at this point in time. And push for definitely lower than what they're proposing. I wouldn't even want to take fifty percent of these numbers.
Understood.
Do, do we know whether this will affect if the Public Utilities Commission approves it?
So it'll, last time it took almost a year, but I mean, it was very, very off and on. There were a few phone calls, and, and, you know, hearings, they called them, but they were, they were mostly over the phone. So it, it took quite some time. So I, I would, and it came before the council to decide whether to agree with what was being recommended as the settlement or not. So you will have some say into whether to agree officially on the record with, with what is ultimately going to go forward with the rate, but it, I would guess it would take nine months or so.
Okay, okay.
But we could definitely add in the letter, if you wanted, that it's not even appropriate to be considering this until the pandemic is resolved, if, if that's the council's pleasure.
I would definitely like to see that added.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Anyone else, uh, want to speak on this side? With that, so the staff is asking that we authorize you to send a letter of protest, protesting the proposed rate increase, um, to entertain a motion to that staff.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
This is Councilman Kearney. I'll second it.
Okay, the motion has been made by Reed, effective by Kearney, that we send a letter of protest to the California Public Utilities Commission. Are there any debate or discussion on the motion? Then I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the vote.
For item eight, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne, Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullen Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, madam and City Attorney, for that report. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, which is City Attorney Selection Process. Let's have the staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Good evening. This is Kevin Chung, City Manager. As you'll recall, earlier this year, a subcommittee of the City Council interviewed six law firms that responded to an RFP for City Attorney Services for the city. And subsequent to those interviews, three of those firms were selected as finalist cities to interview with the City Council. Those interviews were scheduled for March of this year. Of course, as we all know, that was around the time the pandemic struck, and as a result, those interviews were postponed. At the last City Council meeting on November second, the City Council directed staff to restart this process and to initiate interviews again, and also to put an item on tonight's agenda for general discussion about, about this process. So with that, I will allow the City Council to go ahead and go into discussions regarding this matter.
Okay, thank you for that, um, report. Anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I'm not. Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I was one to ask for this to be on, on this agenda. I know the pandemic has struck, and now we have, this is the norm for everybody. Have we reached out to the other two firms? I know Tiffany's firm was one of the three finalists. The other two firms, to see if they're still interested? And if not, we should do that. And I'd like to see us, this selection in our, our January meeting, because it's going to be informal again, it's going to be webex or whatever. We can make our decision then. Let's put the new incoming City Council members into the frying pan with the other three of us and make a decision in January.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, I'll respond to that question. Yes, we have reached out to the other two finalist law firms. They are both still interested in interviewing, and they are available to do that. So if this is what the council desires, we can certainly restart the process and, um, conduct the interviews in January.
You know, the decision in January. We have December and January, our first meeting is mid-January, I believe. We should, we should have that, our selection sometime in a closed session, and decide then with the new council members, the council member elects. Oh, there'd be so many council members. I mean, it's already been over a year now, and all I get is consensus saying, no, they don't want to move on it. Consensus doesn't want to move on it. Well, it's time to move on it.
I agree. The requested data is already in and available, and can be taken care of from there.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. I have a quick question regarding the staff report. It says that a consensus of the City Council requests an item be placed in the agenda. Just to confirm, I believe only one council member needs to request an item be placed on an agenda. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Protem.
Can City Manager or City Attorney confirm that?
I don't believe we have a written policy on adding items to the agenda, but I believe that historically, we've looked for consensus to add something to the agenda.
Okay, because I remember a few agenda items that there were not consensus in the past, so we added it. So I'm just trying to confirm our process, because I know I requested this a few months back, and we'll saw there was not a consensus, so I'm trying to figure out the, our process here. Maybe that's something we need to look at. I always thought it was one council member, but yes, I'm of the belief that the pandemic doesn't seem to be going anywhere. I think that we need to resume business as usual. It's one of those things where we wanted to show transparency in our process, to show residents that, yes, we do every now and then check and see, you know, our bids and that they're being competitive and, and market value. So I'm okay with proceeding interviews in December if we need to.
Yes, I'm also okay with proceeding as well in December. With that, okay, I think everyone spoke, because, yeah, everyone spoke. Okay, without objection, we let that be the order, and we'll proceed to, um, to do the interviews and try to conclude this soon as possible, January being the target month.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that okay, Madam City Attorney? We can do this by just, just on unanimous consent, right? I think she may have cut off.
Correct, sorry. Yes.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, that's enough for this item for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, right. Okay, so that will be the order concerning item nine. With that, we will move to the City Manager's report. Let's see from the City Manager's.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. Just a few brief items for this report. First off, as our residents know, there has been a surge in Corona nineteen cases over the last few weeks, and with that, I'd just like to echo the recommendations from Captain Allen, and encourage all of our residents to continue practicing social distancing, wearing a mask when in public, and also to continue practicing good hygiene. This is something that is of particular concern, of course, to the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health, and I'd just like to read a brief excerpt from their news release from today, which states, "As COVID-nineteen cases surge and hospitalizations continue to rise here and across California, the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health urges everyone to take immediate action to slow the spread of COVID-nineteen and to stay home as much as possible for the next two to three weeks, except for accessing essential services." So I just wanted to pass that along, just to reiterate how severe the situation has become over the last couple of weeks. On the next item, with next week being Thanksgiving, I just wanted to wish our residents a very happy Thanksgiving, and also to remind everyone to stay safe if they intend to see family and, and friends for Thanksgiving Day dinner. And then finally, I just wanted to also let the community know that per the council's direction, we will be moving forward with the Angel Tree lighting event, although it will be different from previous years, in that we can't have a full community event. We will be putting on a live video to light the angel tree, and as of now, we are now looking at the date of December eighth for, for this event. And so with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir, for the report. Okay, let's move on to, um, council members' reports, the meetings, anything they'd like to share. Let's start with council member. I'm looking through my, through my visual rollover deck. Let's start with Councilmember Dan Reed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any meetings to report. Do you want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving?
Yes. Thank you. Um, okay, I'm sorry. The next, um, council member, Councilmember Pat Kearney.
And I will piggyback on Dan, Councilmember Reed, and say, diddle.
Very nice, very nice. Okay, Mayor Protem, go next word.
Yes, I'm going to echo that as well, and wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving, and, and also, as Councilmember Reed stated, a safe Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will echo that as well, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. And, and I do want to make one announcement for those who find this interesting. Assemblywoman Adam Burke will be conducting her, this year's called a drive-through, Operation Gobble, where, where she'll be giving out turkeys to the community and some grocery store gift cards as well. That's going to be conducted on Wednesday, November the twenty-fifth, at eleven-thirty a.m. You may have previously got an email, and it may have said eleven, ten-thirty, but the new time, please make a note of it, is at eleven-thirty a.m., Wednesday, November the twenty-fifth. It's going to be held at Lennox Academy. That's a, a school in Lennox, California, in Lennox. The address is one-one-zero-three-six Hawthorne Boulevard. Once again, it's one-one-zero-three-six Hawthorne Boulevard there in Lennox, kind of the border of Lennox and Hawthorne, the city of Hawthorne. So if you can make it out, we'd love to see you there for free turkey and gift cards. With that, that's all I have. And I want to announce that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council will be held at six-thirty p.m. on Monday, December the seventh. With that, it is now, let's see, what time is it? Seven-twenty-two, and this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.